Well, good afternoon and welcome to the September 23rd session of the Allen County Public Library Board of Trustees. And I hope everyone is well. Gloria, will you call the roll?
I certainly will, as soon as I get to it.
Okay.
Kent?
Present.
Jim?
Present.
Martin?
Yes.
Ben?
Present.
And Sharon?
Present.
And Gloria's present, thank you.
Thank you.
And Paul Moss is absent.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay, and it passes. All right, let's move to item three, and it's the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain, unless someone wants to pull any of these out, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session, the executive session, caps, executive session, finance and personnel, and the approval of the claims.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay, and we're moving along. Okay, David, you're up.
Thank you, Ben. Just a quick report today, the, in your packet are the financials, there's no other lines that have gone over.
Well, good afternoon and welcome to the September 23rd session of the Allen County Public Library Board of Trustees. And I hope everyone is well. Gloria, will you call the roll?
I certainly will, as soon as I get to it.
Okay.
Kent?
Present.
Jim?
Present.
Martin?
Yes.
Ben?
Present.
And Sharon?
Present.
And Gloria's present, thank you.
Thank you.
And Paul Moss is absent.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay, and it passes. All right, let's move to item three, and it's the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain, unless someone wants to pull any of these out, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session, the executive session, caps, executive session, finance and personnel, and the approval of the claims.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay, and we're moving along. Okay, David, you're up.
Thank you, Ben. Just a quick report today, the, in your packet are the financials, there's no other lines that have gone over spending limits, and they're tracking right on where they should be. The real thing going on in finance right now is, of course, the finishing up of the budget. We met with the DLGF on September 2nd. They gave us the approval to move ahead with the budget, everything was in good order. So I've gone ahead and on Gateway published the public hearing, which is slated for October 18th, and then the actual approval will take place at the October board meeting. So everything looks good on that. Just a reminder, we will need physical presence at that meeting, they won't allow virtual present votes to count for that. The other thing working on, of course, is the fall, is the compensation benefit. We're going to be having a finance and personnel committee, in fact Helen will probably be sending out a doodle poll coming up to, as you remember, we met last month and went over some preliminary items, we're honing those down farther, getting data from what other entities are doing as far as compensation. We did have a virtual meeting with our, the head of PONFX, and found out from them what they're recommending as far as adjustments, because it's been three years since that. As we talked in the F&amp;P meeting, it's been three years since that study, and so what things might we want to consider? And we're gathering those all up and going to bring that to the next F&amp;P meeting, which will then talk about those, plus some of the other aspects of the insurance and offerings that we've talked about there. I think that's really the heart of everything, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. I know we've got a long agenda, so I wanted to make sure I didn't take too much time off.
The only question I have is on the, on the spending of capital, I know there's a lot that, it feels like there's a lot of just POs that are kind of hanging out there right now, and are those, do you think a majority of those will hit by the end of the year still?
Matter of fact, I, we just had a meeting, Larray and I actually just had a meeting on Tuesday with Train and New Era to go over the status of project billings, and a lot of them are going to be coming in very shortly, and some of them hits, yep.
Good deal, thank you.
Any other questions?
To accept the financial.
Thank you, Sharon, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, thank you. Let's get to the claims, anything specifically hanging out there?
No, this is a light check run, actually it's a total of $317,000, the highest bill is I&amp;M for $61,000. So not too much happening on this one.
Okay, motion to approve the claims as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye, opposed, nay, we're passing them around.
I'll bring those around.
Okay, as some of you have noticed, unless you're sleeping, this isn't Susan. Denise is back, and we're delighted to see her again, whether on this side of the table or that side of the table. So Denise, let me turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, so I wanted to introduce a couple of new people. We have a new HR director, and that is Larray Bane, so if you could stand up, please. Some of you have already met her, because you've had meetings with her, but here she is, we're very excited she's here. She started at the end of August. We also have a new events manager, because Josette Jordan is retiring at the end of the week. And we have Lorraine Barre, and she's in the back of the room there, behind Larray.
Welcome.
Those are the introductions. I guess, Larray, did you want to say? Larray comes to us from higher education, HR, is there anything else you wanted to share with?
I'm just really excited to be here, this is my fourth week, if you can believe it. It's been such a great week, I've been doing my branch tours and getting to meet a lot of the staff, and I'm just really excited to be a part of the team, so I look forward to meeting you all.
Thank you, welcome. We have, would you like to introduce the presentation at home, or should I just simply call it? We have two presentations today, the first is the presentation of Library at Home, Jonathan and Peg are here.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
This is Peg Hines, and this is John Frankie. And between the two of us, we have over 52 years of service to the library. I won't tell you who has more. I think John was four when I started. We're fortunate to serve the people of Allen County who can't get to our physical buildings. So we take library material to the nursing homes, to senior communities, and also the homebound residents throughout the county. We put together this little video of ours. We're called your Library at Home team, it's just the two of us now. And if you'll watch this, you'll see why we think we have the best job in the system.
An essential part of the library's mission is to change along with the needs of the communities they serve, and Library at Home is no different. Our roots run back to the turn of the 20th century, and through the Great Depression's packhorse librarians, with newer branches on the family tree, including not just bookmobiles, but everything from book bikes to mobile tech hubs, from buses to burrows. In 1921, Allen County began outreach services in the form of deposit collections, in locations as varied as general stores, post offices, fire stations, hospitals, and even private homes throughout the county. Some of these would go on to become official, permanent library branches. Allen County and future ACPL Director Fred Reynolds took to the roads as early as 1927. Much of the mission at this time was centered around rural service, in particular for children, even after our county branches were well-established. The bookmobile dominated outreach services until the 1980s. Here, parked at Northside High School in 1938, is Allen County's bookmobile, constructed on an international harvester chassis, with shelving inside and out, capable of holding 1,000 books. By the 1960s, there were up to seven bookmobiles in service, essentially converted bread trucks, painted bright yellow according to Peg Hines, who began her outreach career as a driver in 1981. When we finally ended bookmobile service in 1990, Associate Director Steve Fortreed said, "It's not so much the bookmobile's time has ended, as it is the branches' time has come." For other groups of Allen County residents, it meant that their time had come too. Outreach services began to focus more on vulnerable and even more isolated populations. This included the elderly, whose growing presence within the US population was beginning to make itself known. Peg led the transition at ACPL, transforming her expanding number of bookmobile stops at senior communities into a department that focused almost exclusively on service to the elderly and the homebound. Today, we follow tradition, at the same time as we keep an eye on the future. Our patrons are a segment of our community that cannot be put into one category or stereotyped. Those we serve look back fondly on their library-going days. They appreciate the feel and even the smell of a good hardcover book. At the same time, they are increasingly becoming more tech-savvy, and have come to expect the kind of quality services and programming that the library offers, brought to them in their place of residence. Library at Home is here for all of it. Our mission is to serve residents of Allen County of any age, who are confined to their home or institution for any reason, permanent or temporary. With this goal, we house a collection of curated material that is distributed to over 45 retirement, assisted living, and nursing homes throughout the county. We also visit library patrons in their own homes and apartments, serving over 200 individuals this way. We are able to cater to our customers' unique tastes by placing holds on requested books, audiobooks, and movies. Some even place their literary lives in our hands by letting us choose their next great read, based on their interests. We host lobby stops, with a book cart full of new and popular titles, available to browse and check out in central meeting places inside of, and sometimes outside of, residential facilities. Here, we get to know residents' reading habits, and inevitably, a little bit of their lives, as we recommend books, sign them up for a library card, or help them with one of ACPL's apps. We offer programming, one of the most rewarding parts of the job, where we have the chance to interact with residents about topics as broad and varied as local history, travel, Hollywood stars, train trips, and even, yes, outhouses. The slideshow is still a thriving format for Library at Home. The value of these services is evidenced every day by our patrons. For many, use of the library is not just a single part of their lives, but a vitally important one. This fact was only brought into greater focus this past year, when our populations were more isolated than ever. A monthly delivery from the library, often accompanied by a friendly wave from the front porch, became a lifeline. Knowing the importance of what we do allowed us to seek out ways to innovate and overcome the obstacles brought on by the pandemic. At Library at Home, we truly roll with it. As Peg often says, "Only half joking." The work we do today is preparing the Library at Home of tomorrow, so it can serve us as we ourselves get older, no matter what the future brings.
Production facilities provided by Access Fort Wayne.
I do, actually.
Learn more under the.
We heard a little numbers there, but how many books are you giving out each, each month? Or what's your kind of statistics on?
Our circulation is just over 2,000 a month.
Is it, okay, great.
And I heard how some people could request books, but in general, if they don't, how do you determine what populates the bookmobile?
Just knowing who they are, I guess, just doing reference interviews, just like you would do at the desk if someone came up and asked for a book. And knowing them over the years, they do fill out a form when they register for the program that tells us kind of the genres they like, asks their favorite authors. And because we've been doing this a while, we kind of know, if, you know, they read this author, they're going to read this author, so. We're pretty good at what we do on that, I think. We haven't had any complaints yet.
That's great.
I'd just like to say your presentation was very, very good, I really enjoyed it.
Peg and John did a great job, I was sick that week.
I'm sure through the years, that you get connected with many of them, and how do you say goodbye?
It's, it's really hard.
Yeah, I can imagine, I, I could suggest that would be difficult.
And obviously, we've lost a lot over the years. It's just transitional, you have to know your people, and yeah, we miss a lot of people.
I didn't realize it had started like, it's still in 1960. I, I did not have any clue, and this, I was born and raised in this community.
The historical photos were.
Oh, my.
That's the only picture of me back then you'll see.
Well, you never know.
Well, thank you, Peg, thank you. All right, let's move along to item eight on our agenda, very popular part of our program yearly, Mara? Our summer learning program started up again.
So I know that you heard from me before the, this year's Spark Summer Learning Program, about some of the plans and adjustments that we had made in order to accommodate what was going to be happening with COVID, and to keep our community safe. Help me. Oh, it always makes me feel better when it takes two of us, you know what, it's, if it's, it's just not my day today. I'll do the whole thing for you. All right, so I can just, that's. How about this, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm supposed to keep it brief today anyway, I would love to share some of the details about our program, if you can just keep that up, I can just read the stats that I need, so I can send you some pictures that would really.
We have ti, if it's a technical glitch, we have time.
Well, I.
Are you anything? Go ahead and try.
So, here's what I'll tell you, we learned a lot this summer, and the thing that really strikes me most is that our staff was, hey, look, thank you! Our staff was really hungry to get back at our summer learning program. And our community was really hungry to get back at that special joy that happens at the libraries during the summer. It feels electric when you walk into our building. And our staff went, it was really extra, it truly, it was just, we had decorations in every corner, blow-up animals, you name it. We did it this summer because we really wanted to welcome our community back in. So the national theme was all around animals, and so we had a lot of fun with that by creating spaces where people felt welcome, and that could really feel that immediate vibe, because we've been missing a lot of that. So just some general numbers about this program, and these are very general numbers, because I think the truth is, is the numbers really only tell a part of the story from this year. So, you know, we read 8.8 million minutes as a community, we had over 13,000 participants, we served 16,000 hungry bellies in partnership with Fort Wayne Community Schools. Cute kids checking out books, and they checked out a lot of books this summer. Our, we really noticed that there was an impact when summer came along, maybe in a way that we, we always notice a rise in our circulation, but this year was a lot greater bec, just because of the fact that we hadn't had as many kids in our spaces due to COVID. So it was really great to be loud and vibrant again at the library. We did not do any programs in our buildings this summer, and so we took it outside. What I learned is that our staff is willing to program anywhere, anytime, any way that they can. So whether it was a miniature golf course set up throughout the stacks, whether it was the to-go programs that you've seen in the past, whether it was outside in their little patch of lawn, or whether it was with community partners, our staff was out there just really bringing that magical joy that summer at the library that reading and learning bring. Now the best part. I'm biased, but I really wanted to dig in and tell you a little bit about the transitions that we made to our Team Read program this year. Again, at the beginning of summer, we said, oh, things are going to be changing, and, and they did. What we did with Team Read this summer was, we hired a smaller cohort. I'm so used to wearing that, sorry, sorry about that. We hired a smaller cohort of teens than we usually do, we hired 18 teens this year, that's about half of the number that we usually bring in. And what they were tasked with doing, instead of doing outreach for the library and going to our friends at Fort Wayne Parks and Rec, or Boys and Girls Club, because a lot of those sites had altered programs, they weren't letting people in, and there, no one really wanted a group of 20 teenagers kind of in their space because of social distancing. What we did was we actually ran the program in two parts. One, the teens worked at their local library branch. One or two teens were employed at branches all across the city that were within a vicinity to them, and they were just brought in as regular staff members. They brought an energy that really, I think, we haven't really had an opportunity to feel in the way that we did, because these teens were on it this year. So they did everything from help out with programs, to shelf books, to going and creating craft projects. And then we took the program virtual, we worked with two partners that had access to technology and were going to be able to work with us consistently. So on Mondays, we connected through Zoom. So on Mondays, we connected through Zoom with Boys and Girls Club and with Concordia Summer Camp. And it was remarkable to see these teens dig in over Zoom, read a book, and connect with kids that they had never had the chance to meet face-to-face. And then we were pen pals. So our teens diligently wrote a letter to each of the teens, or to each of the children at those sites that they had connected with. And I'll be honest, we didn't get a lot of letters back, but when we did, they were magical. And it was a joy to watch the teens get those letters. The reason we didn't get a lot of letters back is because this, the whole pen pal concept, and we knew that, was something that's really new to a lot of kids and that there's a lot of skill, very important, learning and reading, writing development that goes with telling the story and creating a letter. So our teens absolutely knocked it out of the park this year. We worked with a variety of community partners to do training for these teens on Mondays and Fridays. So everyone from the Fullinger Foundation to the Northeast Indiana Innovation Center to Fort Wayne Community Schools, College and Career, Great Kids, Great Communities, 212 Network, Science Central came in, worked with our teens, presented them maybe something that would allow them to have a bigger picture about what their future could look like. We talked a lot about creativity, turning your art and your passion into your vocation. We talked a lot about entrepreneurship. And I'm so proud to be able to tell you today that two out of 18 team readers have now been hired on at the branches where they worked this summer. That's amazing. And we have two other team readers that are now employed in regular, full-year positions here at the Allen County Public Library. So this was a stellar year, where I'm so excited now about how we can continue to leverage this really remarkable program into something that's even bigger and better, because we learned a lot this year, and it's a springboard, truly. So that's kind of your summer wrap-up. Do you guys have any questions, anything that I could answer for you?
Mara, how was the activity at Woodburn and Monroeville?
As far as participation numbers, so I would say, I'm going to skip back to the, so I believe that's two, and I think one of those other pictures is two. They were, I would say quieter than usual. Woodburn specifically has a really excited community when it comes to doing programs at the library. They did do outdoor programs, but not nearly as many as they do on a regular basis. So it was certainly more quiet than what they're used to, but Woodburn is my favorite branch in the summer because they bring the party for sure.
Any other questions? Well, thank you again for sharing the experience of the summer. We look forward to seeing you Monday.
That's right.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, let's move to item nine on our agenda, committee reports and the cap projects.
All right. Everyone, I can happily tell you, we are moving along. We had a very substantial, robust meeting on Monday. Where Ben Kent and I met with our two consultants, June and Rick, who have been leading this, along with, I believe, Susan, Kim, and Dave. We're all on Zoom call as well. Two hours long, we went over a lot. They presented this with a lot of material. They still have numbers and things to fill in, but we were definitely moving forward to make progress. So I've been tasked, kind of what our bullet point here, what we're doing to move forward, is we are going to follow up with a couple additional focus groups. So we have a homeschool community session by Zoom tonight that is being led by our consultants. And then there's a multicultural session, which includes Spanish and Burmese speakers, which they are holding on the 29th at noon. So our goal there is to have more participation than we had before. So that's trying to get the word out and trying. So if anybody listening wants to be in those, please, I think it's on the website, or contact me, I will make sure you get the information. But we'd definitely like people to be there and call into that. The consultants are preparing facility recommendations, so very specific ones that are trying to be responsive to demographics, community needs, usage patterns, and building conditions. They're certainly using a lot of the information we've already done over the last several years that other consultants have put together and are using that to try to figure out what our building needs will go forward, as well as what the future will bring for Allen County, so they can help us plan as well. They're definitely discussing strategies to improve the patron experience and kind of the service efficiencies, including Maine for that part, as well as all the other branches. We're looking at opinions of the cost, and we're also looking for, to create a community engagement, once we get recommendations, once we come here, to see what the community wants, once we have more specific information and ideas for them to consider as well. We're still putting together the timeline for the public rollout, so next meeting, we will have that much more specific, if not a presentation to show you at our next meeting as well. And I'm thinking at this point, I think, we're thinking right now, the public comment process may go all the way into the first quarter of 2022. We were thinking it would be done by the end of this year, but right now, we're thinking that it may take a little bit more time, so it might extend into the first quarter of 2022. And I think that's it. Anything else?
I think you covered it quite well.
Okay.
I think the important thing to underscore is nothing is in stone. This is a very fluid and flexible process, so we'd encourage, if anyone is watching or anyone wishes to communicate, whether it be staff or patron, please add that to the mix. These consultants are really sharp.
They are.
Martin, do you have a flyer for the participation call, specifically for the Burmese and Latino participation call?
Kim, why don't you tell us what the, what the, other people can do this?
It's a focus group here, so there was two of the branch managers are coordinating, like letting as many people know as possible. But I can get in touch with them, anyone who's interested. I can give them, forward them all the information, so.
Okay. The reason I ask is I could help put it out in the communities that I have contact with if it's open.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Marty. Good job. Let's move now to finance and personnel. David?
Yeah, really, no report this month. We had met in August, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be setting up a meeting very soon about the next one, which will probably be late October, early November, to finalize the compensation benefit program. So really, that's all that I have to report on that.
Okay. Questions on David's non-report?
Yeah, this is the shortest report I've had.
This is very good. You're doing well.
I'd like to point out that in the approval of the minutes, I'll let you guess who wrote the F and P meeting minutes, because if you look at the other ones, they're about a paragraph long. Mine's a page long, so.
I did notice that, Dave, but I also appreciate the transparency there, I will say.
Thank you.
The public can see it, so I think it's good. There's a lot, a lot of conversation that happened there that I think is good for people to know.
Looking at those, I thought, hmm, well, that's mine for sure.
All right, let's move to item number 10, the director's report, which was included in your packet, but Denise is here for any questions.
Do you have any questions about it? I just want to call out two items. The audio reading service received a notification that they'll be receiving about a $32,000 donation from an estate, and that the ACPL Foundation will be receiving about a half a million dollars from the Hour Foundation, and that's as they're sunsetting that program. And also, I'd introduce you to Leanne Bree. Sorry, pronounced it wrong. But we also have a new marketing, a manager that's working with Stephanie, and her name is Kara Stevenson, and they both started this week. So we have two new managers on staff.
Questions? Let's move to our COVID-19 response update.
So we're still in code orange. We have a plan if we move to code red. We were able to move to our fall hours, and that started on September 13. So some of the branches have additional hours. You'll recall that this summer, we typically close on Saturdays, some of our locations, and we were able to keep them open this year. So we were really pleased about that. So we've moved to our fall hours, and as long as we stay in orange, we will remain with those hours, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Did you want to say something about the Super Shot?
Oh, yeah. So Susan has reached out to Super Shots, which is an Anthem-sponsored program for seasonal flu shots, but also COVID vaccines. And we're going to have those at three locations starting tomorrow. One vaccine clinic is here at Maine, Pontiac, and also Shawnee, and it will be, they will be offered on September 24th, October 1st, and October 8th. And it's open to the public, and they're free. There's no cost for the, for the shots.
And Super Shot focuses on children, but can adults participate?
Anyone can, yes, so children or adults.
Great, good.
Is that being advertised then on our website, or are the word getting out to the various people?
Yes.
How are we letting people know?
It's on our, it's in social media, and it's on our website. And Stephanie?
Also, Super Shots has been publicizing it, so it's been providing a lot of media coverage over the past week.
And I saw it on the public radio website. There was a little news piece about it as well.
And on the news at noon, I watched the show also, so it's getting out there.
Okay, great.
All right.
Actually, when we're talking direct, I had a question. We have a staff, the staff day is coming up, right, in the next week or two?
Yeah.
And it's going to be by Zoom, if I'm.
That is correct, yeah.
Are we going to let the trustees have invites to various things? Or is there anything for the trustees that we can watch, or?
It's an, it's an all-day program. I don't see any reason why you, you can't join. I guess, sorry, I have a question mark on my face, because I guess I thought you were already notified about that, but I'll make sure.
Maybe I was, but I don't remember.
We'll make sure that you get a message about that, because it's a Zoom invite.
I know we've been invited to make sure we're participating in a special presentation. So I'll challenge all of you board members, if you haven't done that yet, maybe you should consider doing it.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I'm not going to spoil it. I'll talk to you all offline here.
Let's move, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I just, huh-huh.
Oh, huh-huh, huh-huh, okay. Any items of old business that we might have missed? Let's move then to new business. Kent, did you want to?
Yeah, I just have one, just kind of information fact to send. For the last couple months, the presidents of the board, so Ben here, President of the Foundation Board, which is Commissioner Rich Beck, and the President of the Friends Board, Mike Horton, have been meeting to discuss just ways that the three organizations can continue to work together and build support for the Allen County Public Library. And so it's just been good to see the, I guess, collaboration that still exists there, but also, you know, questions of how can you reinvent, and how can we do things differently, and what can we do? One of the exciting things that's come out of it is there was, the foundation just approved a new website for the Friends and the Foundation, so we'll be working on a new website to showcase the work of the foundation and the Friends. This is also an effort to make their work more known, but also to expand our fund development opportunities in the community, so that way people can have a spot to come and learn about the work, but then also hopefully support the work of the library through those two groups that work to support the library. So that's mainly what I wanted to share, but it's been good to see that, that moving forward, and as more information comes on that, we'll bring it back, and sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pretty productive meetings so far.
Yes.
Very good. All right, let's move to item 13. Is there any public comment? Anybody from the public? I don't, we have to do a better job selling tickets. All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second, all in favor? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to remind you to check to see if there are any Facebook comments.
Oh, yeah.
Remind you to check to see if there are any Facebook public comments.
Oh, are there any Facebook comments? No comments.
No comments today.
Thank you, Sharon.
We'll have to start a rumor. Maybe not. Okay. Well, a motion that we adjourned, second, we're adjourned.
All right.
We will meet now in executive session to discuss personnel matter. So thank you so much for coming. We'll see you Monday. Thank you. Take a three-minute break.